I'll be on lookout and I have your stuff on my list for tomorrow, so. Oh, okay.
It's easy enough. It's not entirely free, but that's all.
Okay. I can get it done. Well, hopefully you'll have good weather, good weather up there.
But, believe me, this is not that big of a deal.
No, I was thinking that would be good weather for Boston this time of year. It's gonna be cold. Ugh. Unseasonably cold everywhere. Yeah. Right, yeah. Much colder than this is.
Say, continue working with them. I like that solution, so I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Not for you. That's right. I hear you're getting excited over there.
Let's get this meeting underway.
Alrighty, everybody. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the city council regular meeting for October the 15th, and the clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Brian Mop.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jimmy First.
Present.
Councilmember John Mesa.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Robson.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Stovall.
Here.
Councilmember Elmer Vif.
Present.
Very good. We will ask our friends from Davenport to lead us in the pledge this evening. Will you do that for us? Thank you. Yeah. Do you know my country, Tishtity? All right, if somebody would approve the agenda for us.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? And that is unanimous. That takes us right on down to council dog. We have a council dog this evening, and she is a big, strong, strapping girl there. Come on. What's, what's her name?
Well, John, she chose you. Congrats.
She's a big one. All she sees is treats. All right.
Alrighty. Hey, hello, my name is Sam, and I'm here with Maria and Mama Bear from DeKalb County Animal Services. We are just down the road. As you can see, she is super excited to be outside of the shelter today. She loves treats, and she's a little bit over three years old, and she came to us in the middle of the summer back in July. Currently, our shelter has 597 dogs. We've been around 600 dogs for the past week. And our, and our shelter is built to only hold a maximum of 475 dogs. So, as you can tell, we're really short on space. So that's why we have a lot of free adoption promotions to help get pups like Mama Bear out to a home. Starting next week, October 21st through October 31st, is our Just Treats, No Tricks Halloween promotion, which all dog adoptions will be free. And then this coming Saturday, if you are a pet owner and a resident of DeKalb County, we're having our Healthy Pets DeKalb event at Wade Walker Park by Stone Mountain, which you can come for free checkups and vaccinations for your cat or dog. And yes, and again, we also have a lot of other programs, such as fostering programs from our Dog for a Day program, two more long-term foster programs. And again, we're just down the road at 3280 Chambly Dunwoodie Road. Thank you.
Very good. Well, welcome Mama Bear to city council. Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
So we have about 200 dogs over capacity that we need to find homes for in the next week or so. So y'all get on over to the animal shelter and, and take a dog or two home with you. Anybody else have anything they want to say?
So last month's dog, any good news, no news? Have we had any updates on Durbin? I believe he's still. Yeah, so he's been on smaller foster programs, but he is still at our shelter. Okay. Right now, with so many in the shelter right now, it's hard for them to get noticed as much and stuff. That's why Mama Bear is so excited to be here, because she spends most of her day in a kennel, unfortunately, as do many other dogs. So whenever they get this opportunity, it's like a whole new world to them.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mama Bear. So sad. All right, under public hearing items this evening, we have the Low Impact Film Ordinance Amendment.
Yes, Mayor, as I discussed at the last meeting, in order to move forward with a second read and a subsequent vote on this, we do have to have a public hearing. But this is an amendment to the Low Impact Film Ordinance. And in this amendment, we are eliminating the requirement to actually issue the film permit for low, what is considered a low-impact film, but do require that they give the city notice. So those are the significant changes to that amendment, as is outlined in your packet.
Very good. Discussion from council. Any questions, concerns?
I have one question. Recently, there was a film in Huntley Hills, event in Huntley Hills. And I guess it was, it may have been a low impact. I'm not quite sure what that threshold is. But part of it, the whole thing, was that they closed the street. So with that.
No, that's not considered a low-impact film.
All right. Just, I'm just curious.
The low impact is supposed to be part of the business license, so you have to have a business license to be able to exercise.
The Low Impact Film Ordinance. You can't just, you can't just do a film. You'd have to go and get your business license, a home-based business license, to say you're in a low, you're gonna be a low-impact film.
Right.
And you have to do it at your location, I believe, right?
Yes, and you can't, so it's considered low-impact because it would not trigger anything like a road closure or any kind of disruptions to everybody else's environment the way a typical film situation would.
Okay.
All right. Moving on down to the minutes this evening. We have two sets of minutes.
I'm gonna, motion to put both of these together and motion to adopt the minutes of the September 12th, 2024 meeting, and adopt the minutes of the September 17th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt both sets of minutes from September the 12th and September the 17th. Any discussion? All in favor? And that is unanimous. And that takes us to our second read, which is again the Low Impact Film Ordinance Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to allow the city attorney to read headings only.
Second.
Motion and a second to read headings only. All in favor? Very good.
Thank you. And as part of the public hearing, do, do we need to make a formal call for any opposition to adoption of the amendment?
Is it in my stack?
Thank you, Sharon.
All right.
City clerk.
All right, so I will read the rules of order for a public hearing. This is a zoning matter. Is it? Okay. The hearing shall be presided over by the mayor. After calling the hearing to order, the mayor shall request the parcels of property which are subject to the zoning proposal be identified and read. Following such identification and reading, the development director's recommendation shall be presented. Mayor and city council shall cause the director's written recommendation to be part of the record. Proponents of each proposed zoning decision shall be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion. Concerning the zoning decision, if all 10 minutes are not used, the proponents' remaining time may be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall be then allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion. Concerning each zoning decision, the presentation times may not be reduced but may be extended by majority vote, provided they're expanded equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak shall come to the microphone. Give your name to the city clerk, and do not speak unless you have the microphone. There's a lot for that. Anyone here wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, all right. Seeing no one here wishing to speak on this matter, we'll move on into it.
Thank you. And that's been voted on, the motion to read headings only. Okay.
Yeah.
This is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chambly, Georgia, Chapter 35, Film Productions, and the Unified Development Ordinance, Title II, Land Use and Zoning, Chapter 240, General Use Regulations, by editing and deleting certain provisions, and by adding certain provisions, and for all other lawful purposes. Section 1 would amend subsection 354B by eliminating the permit requirement, requiring a notice of low-impact film production be made to the city, provision of an indemnification hold harmless agreement, and section 358 would be amended by eliminating, by amending the application and permit procedure. Section 359 would be amended by eliminating the permit requirement. And section 247B2C would be amended by eliminating the permit requirement therein.
Very good. All right. Anyone care to make a motion on this item?
Motion to approve is read by the city attorney.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve is read by the city attorney. Any further discussion? All in favor? And that is unanimous. All right. Our staff action items, we circle back to the PFA bond resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the Public Facilities Authority Bond Resolution and Governmental Contract as presented.
Second.
Don't know who got it, but we had a, we have a motion and a second to approve the PFA bond resolution and intergovernmental contract as presented. Any further discussion on that item? All in favor? And that is unanimous. And then we have purchase of a new bucket truck.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion as presented by staff for the new bucket truck.
Lease purchase.
Lease purchase. Motion to approve the lease purchase of the new bucket truck as presented.
Second. What color is it gonna be?
A motion and a second.
How original.
A motion and a second to approve the lease purchase of a new white bucket truck as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. We have the Comprehensive Plan Update Adoption.
Motion to adopt the Comprehensive Plan Update as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the Comprehensive Plan Update as presented. Any discussion on that item? All in favor? And that is?
Sorry.
That is unanimous.
I'm already reading the next one.
All right, that takes us down to our zoning items, which was the 1909 Chancery Lane Stream Buffer Variance.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance request following conditions. First, the development should be constructed in substantial conformity with the site plan and elevations received by the Planning and Development Department dated received in August 19, 2024. Revisions required by conditions of approval as reviewed and approved by the Planning and Development Director. The applicant shall remove the invasive plant material along the stream bank and replace with native plants outlined in the Plant Species Selection List in 2.2 of the ordinance. Three, the applicant shall stake the extent of the 25-foot stream buffer prior to commencement of work to ensure no disturbances take place within the 25-foot state buffer. Stakes shall remain in place during construction so inspectors can monitor the disturbance. Four, the applicant will remove the existing gazebo structure currently located within the 25-foot stream buffer. Five, the applicant will work with Planning and Development Department to implement stormwater runoff mitigation for the additional impervious surface created by the construction of the addition.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions as stated by Councilmember Vif. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? And that is unanimous. All right. And lastly, we have the Stream Buffer Variance, our 3443 Caswic Court.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer the, a decision on PZ 2024-31-1355-344 Caswic Court until the November city council work session, so that the applicant can work with staff on revised design and construction plan, including the fall, conditions that would address to minimize the impacts and mitigation for the encroachment into the 25-foot state buffer, the 50-foot undisturbed buffer, and the 75-foot no impervious surface stream buffer setbacks. And A, address the adequate changes, drainage, adequate drainage for the house and patio, including the previously installed stormwater equipment, and address the non-conforming retaining wall.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to defer this item to the November council work session as stated by Councilmember Mesa. Any further discussion on this item?
I just wanna make a quick comment, but I don't get any joy from talking about people's backyards. I don't wanna beat the old experiences. I'd rather be working on big items, like sustainability in the comp plan. It got a little heated last week, and I'll admit that our questions are a bit direct. I get that. But this is the only time that we have to address the applicants and ask those questions. I just wanna make sure everybody knows out there, it's not personal. It's never personal. We're just trying to do the best we can and make everybody happy.
Very good. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, that item will move to the November council work session, and that takes us down to public comments this evening. Mayor is the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body, not to individual members. Anyone wishing to speak shall come to the microphone, give their name and address to the city clerk. Limit remarks to three minutes unless further time is granted by council. Not speak a second time until everyone wishing to speak has spoken once, and no one can speak more than twice. Please do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. And with that, I'll open it up to public comment. Anyone wishing to address council this evening? Anyone? All right, and that takes us to executive session. I believe we do have one this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session for matters related to potential litigation.
Second.
A motion and a second to enter an executive session. All in favor?
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, sir. That is unanimous. We are out.